Before, I was a really Shabbat, you cannot let somebody die because you are trying to keep God's laws. Then he defeats the purpose, that's that. So like they didn't, they didn't, they didn't know and that's why I went to, because sometimes we were Pharisees, we seen the commandments and then that's it, we didn't, we think that God is, so he must learn the ways of the Lord, you know, set you, you know, put the bottom kingdom by his word, he need his grace, then we need his grace, having, we need his grace as scripture says, you know. Um, um, um. Catch me, Lord, if there's any iniquity in me. As it says, actually, I'm worrying some, David says, catch me, Lord, if there's any iniquity in me. Because sometimes they think we're perfect, they think that what is going on with, and then God comes and says, oh, you don't work on this thing on your heart. Or you will not have that opportunity if you're not working with the Lord, and this is one of those things, and I'm really trying to encourage you, you know, just feeling sick to the lyrics that I pray with you. Because only God can help us see, Isaiah was in his book, I forget, Isaiah, I wrote in his book, you know, go on to me because he found out that even him is, his righteousness was a filthy rag before the Lord, his perfection was nonsense before the Lord. And he didn't really have any, you know, there was nothing, if not for grace, there was no, nothing. There was nothing, there was nothing, there was nothing, and so we're going to be coming, you know, praising the Lord again intentionally for the next years. And ask him to help us, ask him to help us, ask him to help us. A part of that song says, you know, it is you that I've come to seek, it is you that I've come to seek, father to child, father to child, yeah, my father, it is you that I've come to, to encourage, no, we've come to actively fellowship with the Lord, we've come to understand his ways, understand his heart, you know, through the scriptures. We've come to see how things have been done in the scriptures, how we should live our lives because we are, the source of his kingdom, I mean, learn, I really want us to, um, you know, begin to intentionally, you know, pray, begin to intentionally pray, begin to intentionally pray, I'm going to play this song again, I really hope that we can hear me. Um, I'm going to play, play the song again so that we can hear, um, so that we can pray, yes, I'm going to do something so that we can pray. So that we can pray.
Speak your word, and I will follow.
Yes.
Command me, Lord.
Command me, Lord.
Command me, Lord.
And I will lead.
Speak your word, God.
Speak your word, and I will follow.
Yes. Command me, Lord.
Command me.
Command me, Lord.
And I will lead.
I need you to speak your word.
Speak your word, and I will follow.
Oh, command me, Lord.
Command me.
Command me, command me, Lord.
And I will lead.
I need you to speak your word, God.
Speak your word.
Speak your word. Yeah, command me, Lord.
Command me.
Command me.
And I will lead.
I love you, just speak your word to my heart, God.
Speak your word.
Your word, Lord. Yeah, command me, Lord.
Command me.
Command me, Lord.
And I will lead.
I need you to speak your word, Jesus.
Speak your word, and I will follow.
Oh, let your presence.
Let your presence overtake my space.
Let it be all I live.
Let your presence be.
Let it be all that I live for. Let your presence.
Let your presence overtake my space. Let your presence be all that I live for.
Rati Shabbat. Errepete dosh. Erani la dosh. Erani ana nati la patos. Erreadi bilie ta la batos. Erani niyata. Erro koto leva nattos. Eraniye, eraniye. Your word is what I live, your word is what I live for. I live, I live for your word, Jesus. I halaniye, aradiye. Hey, let your presence be everything, everything that I live for. Ushabat. Irakabatish. Erro akaliminingidibirukutilibarro akadibiet. Erro alabalekatini mini altos. Erregedebelediyesh. Erabala kominitus. Iriniminieta. Ayalananalish. Amaria diye. Ushabat. Irabala katos.
I cannot live, oh God, exchange for the life that comes from your word.
Arabat.
Abaranamani konlenimana nekene kosha. For we can do nothing by ourselves, Jesus, oh, we submit our fleshy hearts, oh God, we submit our, our heart of flesh. We submit it, we submit it, we submit it, that you may break us, oh God, that you may break us, that you may break us and build us again in a way that feeds us, that is fit for your word, in a way that is fit for your word, in a way that is fit for your word. But your word comes, oh God, let it stretch us, let it stretch us, let it stretch us. Because if we don't release our selves through the lens of your word, what are we doing, what are we doing, what are we missing? Let your word come, oh God, let it stretch us, let it stretch us, let it stretch us, let it stretch us, that we may not want to obey, that we may not be iniquity in the name of Jesus, oh God. Let it stretch us, let it stretch us, let it stretch us. It's so bad to, so now we often, oh, we are trusting in your word, Jesus. Yes, command us, oh God, command us by your word. Oh, radapandi pere nos kavanti, to have all the life, oh God, to have all the life. Your life, your life, yes, Jesus, yes.
I follow your word.
Follow your word, oh God, we follow your word, we follow your word, we follow your word. That's where life is, oh, that's where life is. That is where life is, that is where life is. It is not our intellect, that is where life is.
I follow your word.
It's not just these words that we scream, your word is life, it is life.
I follow your word.
It is life, it is life, that's what sustains us.
I follow your word.
That's what sustains us, oh God, that is what sustains us.
Your word is my everything.
Your word is life.
I follow your word.
The life-giving spirit.
Eh, I follow your word. I follow your word.
Oh, oh, oh.
Hey, your word is my everything.
Oh, oh, your word is life.
I follow your word.
Your word is life, your word is life.
I follow your word.
Everyone can be that life.
I follow your word.
You don't want to be the one, you don't want to be the one.
Your word is my everything.
Follow you, you may be everything.
I follow your word.
Help us, help us, help us.
I follow your word. Ayayaya, I follow your word. Eh, your word is my everything. Alakabat. I follow your word. Erro akabala diva diye. I follow your word. Arru eketiliparradikipala katosha. I follow your word. Avelo, avelo, avelo. Your word is my everything. Ayapoto la barru eketela baladiye. I follow your word. Ayeyey, ayeyey. I follow your word. Ushabat. Aleph, every. I follow your word. Ayala badiye, ayala badiye, ayaba la. Your word is my everything. I follow your word. I follow your word. Ushabat. Ayeyey, ayeyey. I follow your word. I follow your word. I follow your word. Your word is my everything. Your word is my everything. I follow your word. I follow your word. I follow your word. Your word is my everything. I follow your word. I follow your word. Your word is my everything. Your word is my everything. I follow your word. 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 Your word is my everything. Your word is my everything. Ayeyey.
Follow your word, oh God.
Ayeyey.
Your word, oh God, we follow your word, we follow your word.
Ayeyey, ayeyey.
I follow your word.
Hey, 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 hey. Ayeyey. Ayeyey. I follow your word.
I follow your word.
Hey, 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 hey. Ayeyey.
I follow your word.
Ayeyey.
I follow your word.
I follow your word. Your word is my everything. I follow your word. 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 Your word is my everything. Your word is my everything. Your voice is my everything. Ah, your voice is my everything. Ayalan ye. Your voice is my everything.
You follow your word.
Hey, your voice is my everything. Ayeyey. Your living is everything. Hey, your living is everything. Ayeyey. Your living is everything. Eh, your living is everything. I follow your word. I follow your word.
You follow your word, Ariane, you see, the word.
I follow your word. Eh, eh. I follow your word. Your word is my everything. Your word is my everything. I follow your word. 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 Your word is my everything. Your word is my everything. I want to finish this song today, already. Hey, 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 hey. Nice to you. Hey, 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 hey. Everybody in Manando, you know, in the chorus. Hey, 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 hey. I follow your word. Hey, 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 hey. Oh, hey, hey. Hey, 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 yeah, hey, hey, hey. Hey, 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 hey. Your voice is my comfort. Hey, 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 hey. Your voice is amazing. Eh, your voice is my comfort. Hey, 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 hey. Eh, 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 eh. I follow your word. 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 Your word is my everything. Your word is my everything. I follow your word. I follow your word. I follow your word. I follow your word. I follow.
Thank you, Thomas.
I follow your word.
Oh, Jesus. Ushabat. Alananimanan.
Your word is my everything. I follow your word. I follow your word.
Kapane. Ayalan menago, bini manando. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, can we still hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. Um, sorry, hold on. Good evening, everyone, um, please, if at any point you cannot hear me, please let me know, um. I'm intentionally sharing my screen so that maybe, you know, we can read as we, um, as we learn or as we, as we journey, um. I feel that, you know, we help to see what you're reading. Sadly, I cannot access the device where my concordance is, so I'm going to need somebody to help us, um, you know, with that. If you can provide the, what's it called, translations or definitions from Strong's, Strong's Bible, from the chapter. Please signify so that we can get that off, but I'm not able to access my confidence at the moment. So please, 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 I'm going to be asking. Um, but yeah, good evening, good evening, everyone. Um, it is the, hmm, they what? That's why I wanted to apologize, you know, last week, last Friday, we couldn't hold TOT, um, for some reasons. Um, and I do miss, you know, fellowship with us, it is, it's starting to become, there's this thing about you, you know, gathering and learning the word well. For me, that has spoiled Honda, so it's, it's like I stabbed myself, I don't know, you know, how that felt for you, but I apologize, um, we apologize, you know. Um, we apologize for the inconvenience thereof, um, and we hope that in the future we can prevent such occurrences, occurrence. Anyway, um, so, but yeah, we're here, I think this is eighth, no, eighth was last week, last month, wow. This is the, wow, this is the tenth meeting, wow. Wow, interesting. I'm going to just say thank you, Jesus, thank you, Jesus, I'm going to submit a mic if we can and just say thank you, Jesus. This is our tenth meeting, you know, we have been going back and forth with the Book of Psalms, um, and we have met nine times. You know, this is the tenth meeting, God is good, God is good, God is good, God is good. Um, I have seen some of us here again and again and again and again, and like, oh, okay, you must really, you know, love the Bible. Uh, I mean, I commend, I commend us, I really do commend us, yeah, if this is your first time, um, Oluwa calls me, I think this is your first time, right? Um, this is your first time, you know, this is an encouragement for you, people have attended this meeting, you know, nine, 10 times, whoa. Dammy, I feel like Dammy is a star student, you know, um, I'm not sure if I can give myself stars, as well, what choice do I have? But, you know, Dam is a star student, um, Omajisnola is a star student, yes, it's thanks to handing over medals. Um, Abigail, hmm, let me see, you are, you are a moon student. How many meetings have you attended? Ah, open up, how many meetings have you attended, um, Abigail, if you can, tell yourself.
Maybe five or six.
Okay, well, I was there, I started with my journal, but well done, well done, well done. Um, lots of fair on me, I think I have seen you twice, I can't really remember, but if you want to redeem yourself, please, the floor is yours, you know, to measure how many times you have joined, um, but I mean, it's really beautiful to see that, you know, we're coming again and again and again to just learn. Because I've been doing any other thing with that time, but I mean, how best to spend our evenings, in spite of whatever else thing we're doing, how best to, um, you know, what, what best to add to your speaking the Lord itinerary than Bible study, you know? Um, it is, it is really beautiful when we gather together to just learn the heart of the Lord, and this is again, you know, as I said earlier, we're not just coming here to increase our information or body of knowledge, but we're here to actually learn Jesus, that's how I see it, we're here to learn Jesus. If you don't, if you don't know how the rules of a kingdom works, you will miss, you will misrepresent the kingdom, you will, um, misact in the kingdom. And there are consequences for these actions, but this is not even why we still believe in the word of God, it's just that we are in alignment, just that we are, you know, on the straight line, we're not moving here and there, we're not, we're not doing daily, daily, you know, we actually know what the laws of the Lord says, and we're patterning our life after it. And so that when, you know, the trials and the tribulations of this world comes, he will find the word in us on our mouth, we will not say any other thing other than the word. As the Seronami says, you know, we would have had it bound on our hearts, you know, on our foreheads, like that's the, that's the life in our blood. Literally, that's the life in our blood, you know, um, um, the entrance of, of, of his word brings light and understanding. So if we, if we don't have wisdom for, for certain situations, I was listening to, um, I think it's Charles Kirk, um, you know, address some university students, area three. And he was saying that, you know, in schools these days, I mean, the American education system, you know, there are, there, there's a lot of information, but there is no wisdom. Wisdom is empty, wisdom is lacking rather, and the reason is because you cannot, you cannot out, um, what's the word, outwise the Bible, it is a word like that. You cannot be wiser than the Bible, or the one who wrote it, who inspired it. Scripture says the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom, but people don't fear God and they want to be wise, it's not possible. What you have is information and knowledge and, you know, chatter boxes around, people claiming to be deep when they are not. If you don't have the fear of God, then your wisdom, your wisdom, in fact, the fear of the Lord is the beginning, meaning when you fear the Lord, hey, you will now be granted access into the, you know, gate of wisdom. So people that do not fear the Lord definitely are not wise, period. So, um, and he was saying that, you know, knowledge is knowing something, knowing that, oh, I'm supposed to, um, wear my clothes today, I'm supposed to wear, wear, you know, clothes to go out, even though some people, even they're not like, well, they don't even worry. But I'm supposed to wear dress, you know, to this occasion, wisdom is, do I even have to go to this occasion, you know? Um, knowledge is, I need to, um, study, I need to go to school, wisdom is knowing which school, when, you know, what course. So those things are very, very different, wisdom is eternal, you know, um, and I think I agree with that. We're here to also learn wisdom, and in case you don't know, wisdom is Jesus, ah, wisdom is Jesus. Maybe sometime in the future when we go into Proverbs, we'll see how wisdom is not, um, wisdom is not, you know, a, an abstract thing, but rather a being. Yeah, so Proverbs, um, I think, was it Proverbs, Proverbs? I'm going to look it up now, um. I'll find it, this, this problem, I may not remember what, what verse, what is written, it is, it will end in Jesus' name. Anyway, um, yeah, when we go into Proverbs, we'll see that Jesus is the reason that I was spoken about there. Um, yes, and I know that we have questions like, but Proverbs, Solomon used her, you know, like it was a lot of her, like she, she did this, she did that, you enter. Let's let me not get ahead of myself, okay, tonight we'll be entering Psalms four. I hear, uh, by the way, people don't indulge me, we'll not move forward though, we'll move forward in life, but we'll not carry on with the next phase, phase of, you know, next program. So please indulge me a lot, come off, even if you're in a noisy environment, come off me, who would hear the, I just know that you're with us. I need us to just, you know, be excited for entering Psalms four, come on, come on, where's your joy, people? Where is your joy, where is your joy? Where is your joy? Thank you, Dammy, your joy is in fire, come on, come on, love it, love it, love it. Abigail, you wanted to show your joy, show it too, show it, show it, show it, show it. Eh, even if it's in laughter, eh, hooray, why is Psalms four, thank you, thank you, okay, okay. I mean, if you have work, I, I understand, but if you can just, you know, you're at the, come a few times, you know, be here, um, you'd be very, very, very helpful. Um, to me and to you and to the Lord. Okay, so who wants to read Strong's dictionary for us? Who is able to do that, because I don't even have access to it, I'm, I'm trying to decide, but, um. Ah, the matter is long, I'll come here, you know, the opening new, can you see, the process is very long. Open a new, um, can he come here, like it's just long, how many times do I have to do this? Who wants to read Strong's dictionary for us, please, 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 help us, help us, help us, help us. Um, all right, well, I'm hoping to see, you know, somebody volunteer for us, um, hoping that we have that, that space, that opportunity. So I'll read Psalms four, um, I, I usually like how, you know, the Bible, the, because I use U version, yeah, I really like how, um, setting, setting translations or setting publications of the Bible, titles each chapter or each portion, each, um, body of, of, of message, you know. Um, for example, in Psalms, in Psalms one, you know, it says, um, rather, so, I mean, Psalms is, I don't know if we watched the video earlier, I think we reset it for the new people who joined. Um, but like there's a way to the study of Psalms, so for example, Psalms one to two is, um, a separate body of work. Psalms two to, I think, um, fifty-something or seventy-something is another body of work, like it's divided into, if I'm right, four, um, books, you know. Um, and each, each book serves its own purpose, so Psalms, Psalms, this is book, book one, you know, um, or rather not four books, four, um, divisions. Eh, so book one is Psalms one to forty-one, and this chapter is specifically the way of righteousness and the end of the Holy. If you've not, if you were not here during this session, please go to YouTube and stream it, um, and if you're currently on YouTube streaming this, please, you know, search for, um, or just, it, it, it's part of a playlist, so you can just check the recommended or, you know, similar videos or anything like that. Or just search our, our channel on YouTube, and you see, um, part one, that's how they leave it, or two, part one, part two, June part one, June part two, and another. Um, but like, it is very, very crucial, because this is the beginning, honestly, you cannot, you cannot really understand Psalms two if you've not read Psalms one, so very important. Uh, then Psalms two, the Messiah's triumph and kingdom, you know, before now, we did not think that Psalms two was about Jesus, we used to think, you know, it was just, David was just yearning in his heart as usual. But like we need to, that's where, that's where Rema comes in, you know, understanding the intent, understanding the context, understanding the, um, um, idea behind each verse and each chapter. So yes, David was a very, was a lamenter, it is a word like that, but in the midst of that, he was also a prophet, you know, and he could prophesy, he could, um, get a glimpse into the heart of the Lord for the future and say it out, so Psalms two was, you know, a prophecy. Psalms two was, you know, a prophecy about Jesus. And also, um, the reality of what we've been called into as joined hairs with Christ. Okay, so Psalms three. Um, was David's cry to the Lord and his knowledge about the Lord that helps him in turning trouble. So he was running from his son Absalom. I mean, as you can see, you know, when he fled from his son, from Absalom's son, so, um. Yeah, that's what Psalms three is about. So Psalms four now, the safety of the faithful. Again, if you've not, you know, um. If you, if you're not with us for Psalms one, you may need to get it, get the, hmm, I must stop my pastor, get the teaching. Actually, get the teaching, you know, so that you can understand the full context of this, because it's somehow progressive. Um, the faithful here, it's not just saying, oh, people who, um, are Christians. Like, there's more to that. If you don't understand the ways of the ungodly, the seat of the sinners, the, 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 the. He said, this man, hey, Jesus, guys, help me. The counsel of the ungodly, eh, the counsel of the ungodly, you know, the ways of, um, sinners, the seat of the sinful. You may not understand what it means to be faithful, to be the faithful in this context. So, again, chapter one is very important. Um, okay, so this Psalm says the safety of the faithful. The chief musician would string the instruments. I mean, this is a description of how, um. Please, if you cannot hear me at some points, please let me know, because I'm feeling as though my network is, um. Please, let me know if you cannot hear me. You can, you know, um, Abigail, please, you can message me on WhatsApp. Because I'm using another data source on WhatsApp. So you can message me on WhatsApp if I become, um. If my voice becomes cracked, you know. Okay, so, um, thank you. To the chief musician, the stringed instrument. I mean, Psalms are not just things that you read quietly. They are things that you chant in some, in some, um. Situations in, in the Psalms, you know, you see how this song is, is not solemn. Hear me when I call, oh God. Like, it's music, you know, with stringed instruments. Imagine a guitar, string guitar playing. And they're saying, hear me when I call, oh God, you know, like, that's how Psalms are actually being chanted. So we are not, I don't think I read, um. Hear me when I call, oh God, my righteousness. You have relieved me, my distress, you know, like. There is the energy that comes with the way that people, that, that are reading Psalms, especially David, there's energy that comes with it. So you can see to the chief musician, like, it is actually music, you know, but again, this is why we need to go back to the scriptures, because I love, I love gospel artists. Yeah, I, I'm trying to use the word artist, not ministers, you know, who would just sing because, oh, I love the Lord, I just wanna sing something. Um, but as your philosopher Sunday puts it, minister to me and I will minister to you. Like, there's the place, there's the place of, you know. And, and as Bruce puts it in his song, oh my God, I, I could recommend a lot of other people that you should be listening to, um, this is not even a diss. But just because it helps you strengthen your walk as well, because some worship is not something that we just do to God. You know, God, hmm, I'm trying to not get ahead of myself, um, and not scare you people, but is an exchange, you know. Worship is not just, oh, I reverence God because I'm the only one who can worship. That is not exactly true. In fact, our creation and the way that God blesses us and puts us in places is a form of worship, you know. He, God serves us. That's the truth. That's not a conversation around this, this, you know, teaching, but just so that we know that whatever we're doing to God is as a response to what he has done. You're saying God is mighty, God is glorious, you are beautiful, you are this, you are that, you know, the very beautiful things that we call God. It's because he has already put his love in our heart. It's because he has already created that space, we can access it anyway. So there is no, we, we're not the ones that, you know, just say, ah. I don't really like what God has done, or, or I don't really refuse this God, I'm just gonna love him. Like, that, that doesn't happen. Whoever loves God, God has loved their faith. Whoever serves God, God has served them first. You know, wha- whatever we give to God is because he has given us faith. So he's always the one that makes the first move. He's the one that first says, I love you, you know, in this relationship. So, um, yeah, uh, it is important that we, we realize the truth actually according to scripture. So God ministers first, then we minister after him, that is worship. You don't start worship with your perceived knowledge of God. When, um, is it Hagar? It's not Hagar. I used to mix their names, the slave, Abraham's slaves. Please, if I'm saying something that is not correct, I, you know, the correct one, just, this is my life, eh? When Abraham's slave, you know, was running away and and was complaining and, or rather, was in, was in, um, despair and, you know, the Lord intervened and, and, and um, spoke to her. She said Elroy. It wasn't, that, that thing did not come from, oh, um. Let me just worship God so he will help me. Like, it came from a realization of how God served her in the moment. You know, so whatever she did there was a response to what God has done. I hope I'm getting it. The response to what God has done. So, um, yeah, but that's by the way. Okay, so with stringed instruments, so just imagine that David was chanting this with, you know, strings, guitar. I mean, I don't think guitar was alive then, but um, I mean, we need to research what string instruments were present in those days. Oh, yeah, that, that's an important part, by the way, but not as important as the rest of, um, the interpretation of the scriptures. So, verse one, let me read, let me try and read as dramatic as possible. Actually, we could just play this. Anyway. Uh-oh. Um. Okay, so let me see, let me share my, my, um. System audio, so that it can help us hear well. All right.
Psalm four, to the chief musician with stringed instruments, a psalm of David. Hear me when I call, oh God of my righteousness. You have relieved me in my distress. Have mercy on me and hear my prayer. How long, oh you sons of men, will you turn my glory to shame? How long will you love worthlessness and seek falsehood? Silah. But know that the Lord has set apart for himself who was godly. The Lord will hear when I call to him. Be angry and do not sin. Meditate within your heart on your bed and be still. Silah. Offer the sacrifices of righteousness and put your trust in the Lord. There are many who say, who will show us any good? Lord, lift up the light of your countenance upon us. You have put gladness in my heart. More than in the season that their grain and wine increased. I will both lie down in peace and sleep, for you alone, oh Lord, make me dwell in safety.
Amen. Can we still hear me? Um, can we still hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, because I wanted to be sure that my, what was it called? My, me sharing my audio doesn't affect my voice. Obviously, how, you know, it was read. Obviously, how dramatic it is. But that's not, that's not the drama that I usually listen to my Bible with. It's an N L T version. It's a man that, you know. It's called dramatized version. In fact, when it gets to maybe, um, there was a part I really liked when, you know, the, the story of, um. Jesus sleeping, sleeping in the book during the storm, like, there was a lot of sound effects, you know, like, it just put me there and, and I'm just wondering, oh my God. You know, this is real. This is not just one story that, one fiction, like, it is real. And the drama that comes with it was, this is just very intense. It's in the Bible. Um, I recommend U version, um, and I recommend the N L T version. Dramatized N L T sounding sound, because there's just a lot of standing that comes with the choring. Okay, so, um, by the way, I wanted to, I wanted us to quickly learn the meaning of silah, so that so that, you know, we don't see that just jump over it. In some translations, it will say interlude. Um, so, can we see? A Hebrew word of unknown meaning at the end, at the end of the verses, perhaps in musical direction, but traditionally interpreted as a blessing meaning forever. That is not true. Silah means to pause and ponder. Hold on. Um. Please, give me another. Thank you. Yeah, stop and listen, actually. I'm trying to find a a, um, I mean, because this is Bible study, we're joining together, so silah means pause, ponder. Like, it's a break. It's definitely, I mean, it's an interlude, but not like interlude and, you know, um. Let's just dance away. It's like, I have said these two verses, I have, I have proclaimed these two things, and I would let it sink. That's what it's really, let it sink, you know, pause, ponder, um. Let me see, let me see, let me see. Mm-hmm. With my voice, I cried to the Lord. He hears me and answers me out of the deal. Silah, pause and calmly think of that. Yes. This is, this is the one that is widely, um, approved, widely, widely believed. Pause and calmly think of that. So let's try that, you know, while we're reading this. Um, hear me when I call, oh God of my righteousness. You have relieved me in my distress. Have mercy on me and hear my prayer. How long, oh you sons of men, will you turn my glory to shame? How long will you love worthlessness and seek falsehood? I really hope that we see lad when we say, is it silah or sailah? Oh, God. I think it's sailah, sorry, sailah, yeah. Um. Yeah, okay, both are correct. Ah, wow. Why am I stressing? Anyway, you know, sailah. And then, you know, you pause and you calmly think of what you have, you have chanted or, or said. So yes, there is a lot of drama going on with the stringed instruments. Yes, there's a lot of, you know, um, energy with the way that you are expressing how much I maintain, or you care, or you're praising God, but like, yeah, in the midst of all of that, like, meditate. Pause, ponder, don't just be carried away, because all the time, we, we just get carried away with the things that we do in righteousness. Like, I just read in, ah, there's my shepherd, I shall not want, it doesn't seem to lie down in green pastures. Like, so for example. There was a day that one scripture hit me, um, and since that day, like, it, it turned my life around. I remember it like. And, I mean, it's a, it's an extension of the same, the same, um, information, so just as the Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want. Ezekiel, Ezekiel thirty-four fourteen, you know, um. Where says the Lord will cause me to lie. He, he will cause me to lie, you know, on the high pastures of, you give me the high high pastures of, of, of Israel and cause me to lie in the good pastures of the land. Like, when that hit me. There was a knowing, eh, that nobody can take away from me. So even if, you know, I only have seven hours in my account today. There's a joy that is in my spirit, that I know that, eh, this, this is my abundance. It's not in the, my balance says, you know, two thousand and era. The Lord is causing me to lie in good places, in good pasture. So he will give me good things, like, it just hits me. In fact, when, when it hits me, I will sit on my throne, I just say, so I rest. Because I, there was a, there was a sailor moment where I just realized, oh boy, God can never give me terrible things. He's not going to give me scrap. He's not going to give me, you know, leftovers. Whatever he gives me in this season of my life and in every season of my life is good. I need to go and find that, right, so that we'll see, you, you'll see why I'm very excited. Um. Like, it just hits me that God cannot, I can't be treated badly. I can't, I can't say, oh, because, you know, people are doing A, B, C, and D, and I'm not doing it. So, Lord, I don't know what will happen. What if I miss out? Like, that is never the case for me. That is never the case for me, because guess what? Please, 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 don't, eh, eh, thank you. I will feed them in good pasture and their food shall be on the high mountains of Israel. Sorry, N L T, where are you? Was, if he wants to be doing it, I like. Um, yeah, N L T. Yes, I will, I will give them good pasture land on the high hills of Israel. There they will lie down in pleasant places and feed in the lush pastures of the hills. Are you, I said, eh, oh my God, like, I'm remembering again, I'm just having, you know, those thoughts, because guess what? God cannot give me nonsense in whatever that means for me. And I'm digressing, but I, I need to drive a point home. God cannot give me nonsense. In who I marry, in where I work, you know, in the places that I live. Doesn't mean like life will be rosy, you know. No, but even in the midst of the trial, like, but I practice that, like, God gives me as his gift. As his, oh yeah, yeah, here is your portion. My portion is always good. It is, oh, I'm not, I'm not disadvantaged, like, that's how it hit me. And since then, every time that I just remember that, you know, oh, I pay attention to A, B, C, I just say, I rest, you know, I give me good pasture land on the high hills of Israel. So where me I'm operating from now is the high hills of Israel. I don't care, I, I don't, I really couldn't be bothered. That's why I stay, you know. I will lie down in pleasant places, depending where I will sleep, there's not a problem on my bed. That's, that's how he hits me. So unless we actually learn to can we still hear me? I don't hear my name.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, can we still hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I can.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, so unless we learn to read portions of the scripture, thank you, Dami, thank you. Um, and sailah, actually, it will not get to Jesus, it will just be carried away with reading and they will not, will forget to meditate. Okay, so that's where this comes from. So, um, hear me when I call, oh God of my righteousness. You have relieved me in my distress. Let's take it line after line. Hear me when I call, oh God of my righteousness. Hear me when I call, oh God of my righteousness. First of all, this seems like a paradox, or a paradox, yeah, looking at where we are coming from, because, um, in Psalms three, David had said, um. Sorry, hold on, let me, let me just confirm it. Um, yeah, I cried out, I cried to the Lord. I cried to the Lord, um, with my voice, and he heard me from his holy hill. You know, and it's, it's looking like, um, but the Lord heard you before, so why are you saying, hear me? Why are you saying, hear me? Um, Abigail, am I still breaking up?
Okay, no, 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 ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, hear me when I call, it just sounds like tautology, like God hears you anyway, duh. But it seems like a call, like, it's like you're saying, hi, Abigail. Like, Abigail, listen to me, you know, you are the love of my life. Um, I can't really sleep unless I, I don't know, talk to you. I need to go and up my risque game. What's this? Hey. Um, okay, so I think I'll be talking here and just sharing my screen on my other, so that there's no breaking transmission. Please hold on. Um. Coming. Anyway, as I was saying, you know, it's like saying, um, I can't really sleep. I can't, I can't do anything, you know. Except you hear me. So the hear me is not, that's not me saying you don't usually hear me. I'm just calling your attention, like, okay, Abigail, I'll talk to you now. Do you know that I really love you? You know, do you know that you've been there for me in times when I, yeah, like all of that. I, don't worry.
Don't worry.
Anyway, all right, so I'm going to go and up my risque game, because I can't keep living like this. Uh. This is how I'll be, um, um. This is how I'll be toasting my husband. Now, well, you should pray for me. Okay, so, um, I hope you can see my screen, because I'm trying to share my screen on the other line, um. Okay, so, hear me when I call, oh God of my righteousness. You have relieved me, or rather, wa- was still staying there. So hear me when I call, oh God of my righteousness. There is, again, you're coming from chapter three, you see that there is a track record with David and the Lord. Where he, every, every time that the Lord shows up for David, every time that the Lord, um, does something to or for David or in David, David holds it. You know, he doesn't, he doesn't eat with it, as my people will say. He doesn't, he puts it at the back of his hand. He doesn't, he doesn't put it on the palm, so that I will not go and eat it back. Because there's no way that you remember that God is the God of your righteousness if you do not, if you do not keep a track record of him you know, sustaining your righteousness, because David was a follybouman. Funny bum man, you know, um, and by now, we should know that righteousness is not. Um, um, being right, righteousness is right standing with God. And it's interesting, because Jesus, Jesus had not even come here and died. So how did David know that God is the God of his, of his righteousness? That segment is very powerful. There was a knowing that in spite of his um, um. Fraughties, in spite of his terribleness as human, in spite of his flawedness, I mean. If I miss my English, she's, you know, there's a God that sustains him. Because really, if you're not righteous, you can't pray to God, you can't see God, and that's why they always have to do the cleansing. And the washing and the, you know, offerings and the sacrifices, because you have to be holy and blameless to see God. You know, and that's what you just came to give us free of charge. I don't feel like we even worship God enough or just how much he loves us and wants to redeem us to himself, you know. Can spend our entire life doing that, and it will still never be enough. Um. But like David had an understanding that his righteousness was not in the washing of utensils, like the Pharisees did. His righteousness was not in the, um, I'm not lying, I'm not telling lies, I'm not singing, I'm not looking at somebody lustfully, I'm not. Like those things are important, extremely so, they are commandments, they are instructions that we have to follow. But that's not where our righteousness is. In fact, we do those things because we are righteous. Those things do not make us righteous, we do those things because we are righteous. You know, and that's why we cannot even, I mean, we cannot trust ourselves to be righteous. You know, imagine that um, you were supposed to give um, a, a yearly. Or rather, do a yearly atonement of your sins. And so if, if you are told, let's say last week now. All the sins that you are committing this year now, by the end of the year, you will, or rather, by, by, by next year, this week. I don't know if that makes sense, you know, you would make a tournament for it. And if that time comes, like you don't have money. To buy goods, I need to buy, to buy land. You are a sinner for that year. The wrath of the Lord will be on you. You know, you are doubt cast, you will take. But like, because our righteousness is not even in those things, our righteousness is not in the not telling lies. Our righteousness is not in the, um, because how many sins can you really count? As Paul says. The know, the lo- knowledge of the laws just makes me, makes it clear that I'm a sinner, like there is, there is no good in me. Just because I know what the law says, like, if I judge myself by the law, oh my God, there's damnation waiting in front of me. But because God judges us through the letters of Jesus, through the finished works of Christ. There is righteousness for us, like it is so beautiful, so humbling, so, I don't know, the very. Biggest thing this you can look for, for, beautiful. And so David says, hear me when I call, oh God of my righteousness. So, I cannot access the presence of God except by his grace and by his righteousness, as he has closed me with by himself, so. He's the one that has helped me to meet him. It's like somebody saying, come and see me, and giving you T V, and sending you a driver, like, he has done all the work. All you have to do is enter the car, you know, that's what, that's what this means. So, hear me when I call, oh God of my righteousness. I've already appeased God, like, you know that you are the one that owns my life. We really need to learn how to, let me use our lingua, toast to God, and not because we have been, um, um, what's the word? Eh, let's say word for it, oh my Lord, oh my God. Not because we're, you know, doing like high school boys and we're being foolish in the way that we, um. Say these things. But you know when you're in love with someone, I really hope you do know. When you're in love with someone and, you know, you're just really cursing and, and, and imagining how beautiful your life is. Because they are in your life, you know, and you're just saying, you know that you've always, you. Every time that I look at you, eh hey, I'm getting it, every time that I look at you, you know, there is just joy in my heart, like. Ah, look at that, te lines. Don't play, don't play. Okay, um. You know, every time that I look at you, I'm just reminded of how much love there is in your heart. Hey, my God, oh. Okay, focus, focus, focus. Um, and I'm just saying that to the, to your partner, like, there is, there is a. There is a, there is a, there is a need to want to do more, like, oh, you think you've seen love? Oh, wait, 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 you've not seen Jack. I will fall over you, I will, I will show you love, you know, like, that happens. So we need to learn how to actually, um. Acknowledge the goodness of God, you know, acknowledge the, the might, the strength, the. The person, the character of God when we approach him, and he's not, one of us consumed with our need and, he's just, oh God, oh God. Help you, help me, oh God, will you be looking at me like this? Hey, I'm about to die. Like, there is a place for that. In righteousness, but, you know, we must not, we must not be blinded by our problems, that we do not remember who God is in the midst of that, so. Okay, hear me when I call, oh God of my righteousness. You have relieved me in my distress, so. There's always a pattern, you know, he calls on the name of the Lord, he acknowledges, you know, the might or the character of God. And he recounts a testimony. I mean, with, with time, we'll get into the hang of this very easily, but, I mean, every time that you approach God, just remember. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm not putting this as a one for, one plus one formula for us, but just to. Help us with how to pray, it will better your prayer life, honestly. You know, you, you call upon the name of the Lord, or you're not talking to God like, okay. Someone, you know, there, there's a way that people used to pray, permit my lingua, um, and they just talk and see. Because I watch these movies and I, I watch these shows sometimes, live shows, as in, this one is not even a scripted thing. And the way they talk, you can tell that their heart wants to believe in something bigger than them, but they are too proud to believe in God. Do you get? So they say something like, oh, bless you. Like, who is blessing you? Do you understand? Like, they, they just take the God factor away, or not even God factor, they took God away. You know, and try to act like, oh, if I'm good and I'm kind to somebody, then everything will go well, you know, there's an energy. Like, all those things you are calling, who is, who is the reference point? Because really, if who says in his heart, it's foolishness, there's no God. And then you say, oh, um, think, you, you don't believe in God, but you believe in karma, like. Explain it, please, um, give me reference. Or they say, oh, um, you know, you don't just treat people like trash and expect yada yada to happen, like these things do. Okay, yeah, but who is in charge of dishing out those things? Or who is in charge of ensuring that it's justice? Like, you need to bring it back to your reference point, you know. For example, I cannot just say, um, um, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to. Behave badly, you know, just because I feel like, no, there's home training. Somebody instilled fears in my heart. That if I do it, well, damnation is waiting for you. Like, there's always a reference point, you can't remove morality. Um, or kindness or love away from the law, like, it, it just is not possible, it, it's foolishness at best. You can't remove morality, you can't remove kindness, you can't remove love. You can't remove justice, like those things that balance, that are principles for the universe, you can't remove those things away from the Lord. You can, those things cannot stand on their own, because they need a reference point, okay? And. I, I really hope that, you know, atheists would hear this and just know that this is the Lord calling unto them for repentance. But yeah, um. So, you acknowledge, you call upon the name of the Lord, you, um, um, acknowledge a character or his character. And then you recount a testimony about the Lord. About what he has done for you before, you are the God who sees me, you're the God who saved me, you're the one who is faithful, you're the one who has delivered me from, you know, the bear and the lion. You're the one who has delivered this into my hand, you're, you're the one who brought me out from Egypt, you're the one who, you delivered Pharaoh into our hands, you're the one who conquered. The Amalekites, you're the one who saved us from the, uh, Media Nights, like, there's always, they. Forget where you are in life right now, there's always a track record. I will always say that again and again, there is always, if you just recount, look back, think. There is always a track record, no matter where you are in life, no matter what the mountain is before you, there is, oh, if you look back, if only you look back, you see valleys. If you are, if you are in front of a mountain right now, and you look back, you will see, you'll see proof that mountains have been made valleys before. And you need that proof, you need that track record, you need that reference, you know, for your journey with the Lord, because if you come to the Lord. Um, and not remembering the things that he has done for you, you're going to be ungrateful, and it's a sin before the Lord. Forgetfulness is a sin, like forgetting what the Lord has done for you is a sin, actually, it's a very grievous sin. Before the Lord, if you read the Old Testament, you will see it again and again, but you'll be saying, did they forget I'm the one who brought them, you know, out of. In fact, I feel like God, God doesn't remind them of those things, they say it's time to, foolishness has to enter their head, and we'd be like, come. Me bringing one from Egypt the other day, like you've forgotten how you, how the ocean was split right in front of you. How you passed through, walked on dry land, and then Pharaoh tried it and was drowned, like, are you playing with me? You know, I feel like God does that sometimes. Um, but yeah, you must always recount, you know, who God has been, what God has done, um, for you. Or in you or with you, you know, when you approach his presence, especially when you're about to ask for something. When it's not that, you know, you're just here to worship God, like you're about to ask for something and you cannot remember that God has done, you know, things for you, like, excuse me. Eh, excuse, what are you doing? What are you doing? You know, so David says, hear me when I call, oh God of my righteousness, you have relieved me in my distress. There is a call and acknowledgement that I'm praying to a God that hears me, I'm not just saying things in the air and expecting that the universe will catch it. And somehow there will be a miracle, that's foolishness, you know, but I'm praying to the Lord, like there is a, there is a. There is a receiver, there is a subject, I'm not just doing wishful thinking, I'm not just doing, um, you know, what goes around comes around. Oh, universe will pick it up, maybe the universe wants me to smile today, oh, it's the universe, I don't play, you know, so he. It is clear, hear me when I call, oh God of my righteousness, so David is calling upon the name of the Lord, and, and, and I need it to. Um, sink in our hearts, because sometimes when we pray, in fact, the, the posture of our heart when we pray sometimes is that. Maybe, 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 maybe it will just be one good that comes out of this, you know, moment of prayer. And it's because we don't trust that God actually. You know, um, um. Hears us, or we don't trust that God has our best interest in us, or we don't trust that, you know, God takes pleasure in hearing us. As we saw in Psalm three, and i- i- in, in hacking into our call. I, I really need us to, you know, read that again. Um, a- a- again, if you've not, if you've not been following us in the past, it's time for you to repent and go and follow. I mean, one for the, the, the series, so that you are equipped with the full body of, um. Of teaching. Okay, so it says, um, I cried to the Lord with my voice and he heard me. And we, we established last week that, I mean, was it last week or two weeks ago, that he heard, it's not just, oh, passively. He actually heard and responded, he did something, you know, in the hearing, like God heard, and there was, there was proof, there was testimony, there was. Evidence that God heard. So for example, if somebody, if you're sitting, I'm sitting in front of my computer right now. Um, and then somebody says, Moriah, like, I can't choose, I can't hear, yeah, I'm not doing anything, I don't turn, I don't look at the person, I don't say yes. I'm just looking at my laptop, I can hear, but, you know, as your people will say, move the big watch alike, but God did not do that. You know, he heard and then he responded, like, there was a, there was an evidence that God heard, it wasn't just a, I know that he hears me, so. Yeah, let's just continue, no, but like there was evidence that God had. So, hear me when I call, oh God, oh God of my righteousness, you have relieved me. In my distress. So David calls upon the name of the Lord, um, and acknowledges the character of God. And then recounts a testament of God's, you know, goodness, God's deliverance to him in the past. Um, then have mercy on me and hear my prayer, like, there's this, there's a, I mean, I think that's the scene in posture of David's heart. When he approaches the Lord, sometimes because of the teaching of, you know, inheritance and access to God's presence that we have heard a lot. We can start to become foolish in the way we approach God, like, everything is mine, I have all the rights, you know, like, you're whatever, calm down, I'm in front of the king. And, and if he slap you, no, 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 no. There is a boldness that we come with, don't get me wrong. But that boldness is not from, oh, give me, yeah, thank you, Holy Spirit. So the story of the prodigal son, um, you know. Ah, thank you, that, that's so good, so good, so good. Um, so, the, the son, the second son, which I'm thinking is the last one. You know, because I feel like his last born, last born attitude, um, came to the father and demanded everything, like, give me everything, I want to go and live my life. What do you think you are that, you say Ashma, keep tending to this, commanding your, your eh, your estates and. Please, I want to go and live my life, give, give me my things. Sometimes that's how we approach God, because we have heard of, you know, inheritance, it's all yours. Everything you need is in you, ass of your belly shall float, like those things are true, but they're not supposed to stir pride in us, you know, um. Yeah, so, th- those things are true, when you come before the Lord, you're coming boldly because you know that he hears. But the fact that he hears should humble you, like, it's a paradox, honestly, it is a paradox. You know, and if you've not understood the paradoxicalness of God, ah, I'll pray for you, because, okay. So, um, the, you know, the, the, the other son came and demanded his inheritance and then left. And he finished it, he finished it rather, you know, his eyes cleared and he came back. And the, um, other son that was at home. That the father threw a feast, you know, celebrated, was rejoicing, oh, my lost son is now back, you know, the other son said, um, um. What's he called? You know, I've been here, I've been serving you all my life, you've not thrown a feast for me. And the father said, you know, everything that is mine is yours, like, this is your, this is your kingdom too, this is your estate. So, the fact that I'm throwing somebody a party does not mean that I do not care about you, or does not mean that this is, in fact. It should be that both of us are happy that somebody is back home. Do you get? So that just teaches us something. Yes, we're approaching God with boldness, because like the other son who thought that. Um, his service to God meant nothing. We're approaching God because we know that everything that, you know, he. Everything that he says he has given us, we indeed truly have those things. But even in the midst of that, we do not come and just demand and say, give me, no, because it shows that you're, permit me, you don't have sense. You know, yes, it's my estate, yes, you know, I have an inheritance, yes, I have access to the presence of God, but it doesn't make me equal with God. It doesn't make me, it doesn't give me bragging rights in God's presence. You can brag to the devil, you can brag to the, you know, to the evenings. You can brag to, um, I don't know, maybe your friends even, but you don't brag in the presence of God. There is a, there's a form of humility, confidence, you know, that when you ca- when you call him, he, he hears and he answers. But also because of the might and the greatness of God, there's a, this, there's a form of humility that must keep you bound, like. You can't just, I, 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 I really hope that I'm not, you know, saying the wrong things, but, um. Uh. The, the cry for mercy is not usually for, I mean, for a Christian who, who is saved, you know, is not a cry for. Um, it's not, it's not a, oh God, maybe if I cried some more, you would hear me, no. In fact, God delights, he takes pleasure in hearing us, in hearing us call him. Let me give you one secret that will help your work, hmm? The eh, eh, what's it called? The. The, um, hmm. The joy of God, God's joy, God's joy, hmm, is that when we come before him. Because the, the way I see it is that we come to God's presence, you know, I mean, we always carry his presence, but like, in that moment of interaction. We come to his presence, we carry, you know, his heart, we carry his strength, we carry his will, we carry his, um. His spirit, and we take it out, you know, to now continue to leave it or share it or, you know, tell people about it. So, when we come before the Lord, we not act as though we are in front of the world. God needs us to come to the end of ourselves, he needs us to acknowledge our, our strengthlessness. Again, just by missing my, you know, lingua, it is very important. It wants us to acknowledge our strengthlessness, because if you think that you have arrived. Because, oh, you are now, you can now see, you are now a prophet, you can teach, you can. Go, oh God, it's showing that you not really, really are, you know. Because in, in the case of Elijah, for example, you know, he was saying, he was boasting, ah, now let me serve you for this place, in the, all of Israel. But guess what God said? Because I've sent you, because I've, you know, called you and sent you, doesn't mean that I don't have people who are giving me worship in the street. Let, let me not give you that slap. I have seven thousand, do you know what that ratio is? Seven thousand to one, like I have seven thousand people. Who are not bowed to bow. Seven thousand, like there was, there's a preserved people. Preserved specifics that are also serving the Lord. God can never leave a people without his witness, there's, there's, there, no, it's not possible. No matter how degenerated, how terrible, how bad you think, you know, we've gone right now, I promise you that. You are not, I'm not the only one serving God, we are many, we are many. And in that moment, it was pride for Elijah to think, oh, because I'm the one, you know, going on the mountain, facing air, doing A, B, C, and D, so, ah, God, I don't try for you. Now let me see, everybody has bent, everybody has broken me, I'm still here, I've not tasted his food, I've not, you know, bowed his idol, I'm still here. For God setting him in his place, there's seven thousand others who have not, they've not put their head on the floor to say, I'm gonna worship bow. And there they are, secretly just offering worship to the Lord and leaving for the Lord, but because they've not been called and sent. There's every possibility that we think, oh, they were the only ones. There's every possibility that we think, oh, they were the only ones, I put it to you that there are seven thousand others, even now. By seven thousand, of course, I don't mean that's the number, but like, there are a lot of other people, in fact, that you may never hear of, that you may never know. Who are burning for God, burning for God does not even mean, oh, they are doing something for God, because really our very lives are. Fulfillment of purpose, you know, are very living, like, just seeking the Lord daily, praying to him daily. Is fulfillment of purpose, before, eh eh, eh. What's it called, um. Before God, you know, wanted Adam to tend to the garden, there was first a need for fellowship. There was first a need for communion, and that's why he created him with the capacity to fellowship. So yes, fellowship with me, but like, okay, now I've given you a garden to tend as well, so as we're doing, let's be doing together, you know, just come in the cool of the evening, we will talk, we have conversations. You know, I'll just go back to my throne and, you know, just leave you there and then you just be, whatever we say, just be teaching the animals, teaching you, teach your children, like, that was God's. Design, you know, we'll just come in the, like, cool breeze, I, I, I take evening walks a lot, so I'm visualizing. Cool breeze, we'll just come, see, tap, like, how are you, my lord, you know, oh, how are things in heaven today, and like, yeah, cool, you know, the angels are still bowing, the. Um, the elders are still putting their heads down, like, the crowns are still on the floor. Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, devil is still falling, yeah, like, heaven is good, and it's like, oh, okay, you know what, um, I feel, I feel like we should establish a kingdom in, um. You know, A, B, C, and D, and then that conversation happens, you know. That is God's first design for man, the garden is a, while we're doing that, you can be tending into this. So when we come to the presence of God, there is a need to strip ourselves of everything that we have, everything that we own, everything that we are. And just come with the confidence that he hears us, but also with the humility that we are nothing without him. It has to be balanced. David knows this very well, and that's why it prospers when he calls God, so hear me when I call, oh God of my righteousness. You have relieved me in my distress, have mercy on me and hear my prayer. I really want us to just stop there, you know, so that we don't, um, take verses haphazardly. Um, yeah, so, I, I, I don't know if anyone wants to share what they think we have. What you have learned, what you have, um, what has been established in your heart, you know, based on what we have read today. Um, hopefully, maybe by tomorrow, hmm, I don't even know if that's possible. But I'm, I'm hoping to get my other device up so that I can use Trump's definition and see, but, I mean, I really hope that the Lord has given us understanding to a very. Hmm, 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 I take it back, I really hope the Lord has given us understanding. Yeah, so does anyone want to share, um, what they have, you know, realized or taken home from this justice verse one? Um, uh, yeah, does anyone want to share? Um, Aloua, follow me, you want to share?
Hey, good evening. Yeah, okay, so I feel like, funnily, it's what you mentioned, at least it went along with. Something that was, it's part of what I was reading today and there, was just funny that it was very similar, it's in the book of Psalms, so. So it was just, is where you were talking about the fact that we need to always remember the things that God have done, especially when you are coming to him in a place of prayer. And I remember I was reading, um, some, some seventy, and that verse was saying that they tempted God. And limited the only one of Israel, because they did not remember his power, the day that he saved them from their enemies. And it was just like, so you can limit God, and you can, can limit God by not remembering the things that he has done for you. And it was just, it was, I was thinking about today, and after you just mentioned that. In fact, one of the greatest, we, at least, not merely I say greatest, one of the most important things to remember whenever you come into God's presence is. Remembering the, remembering, being able to list the things, being able to remember the things that he has done already, because funnily is that. That in other way of even building your confidence for the things you're about to ask for. Yeah, if you cannot remember anything that God has done for you, if you can't even list one. In fact, for you to even believe that this for what you're about to pray for you receive might be a bit difficult. Yeah, so, so I feel like, for me, it was, it was just like confirming something that I've been thinking about since when.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you so much for sharing, um, thank you very much, it, 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 an analogy just came to my mind, you know. And I mean, this is the best in place, so, sorry, we will talk about marriages and families a lot. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm actually telling myself to get used to it, don't mind me, okay, so, um, imagine that you are with your partner. I'm saying partner because it can be in different places, it can be that maybe you're in a relationship, you're courting, or you are, you know, married, and, um. Every time that you want to come to them, every time that you want to come and talk to them, you know, it's always the, oh, um, oh, yeah, I need money for this. I need money for that, and that's all that you do, like, oh, um, please take out the trash, um, or, oh, what pick the kids up. Like, you people have conversations about, oh, um, thank you for paying, you know, their, their tuition, thank you for, um. You know, foiling my car, like, the truth is, if you don't even know how to love God, you cannot know how to love, you know. People or whoever God has, has given to you, um, because there is a learning that comes from in your interactions with God. That foils your interactions with people, you know, if you're not, if you, if you're not a friend of God, you don't service your friendship with God. You cannot expect to know how to be friends with, you know, people, because, I mean, when people start to show you their peopliness, you would. They go forward, you know, um, and so, like, there is no, there, every time. Especially when maybe you're about to get into an argument, or you're, you're actually in the middle of an argument, and you forget all the good things that they've done in the past, and it just comes. You're a terrible person, you know, that's how you always do, and people know why I got married to you. You have really literally stripped that person of every memory, every experience, every, um. Goodness, you know, that they have shared with you, and you have read, you have just, you know. It, it just, it just feels as though you are speaking to a stranger, because the way that we build connections. If people is by the things that we experience with and, 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 um, hmm, with and from them, yes. You know, the way that you build your faith is by acknowledging that, you know, it was God who helped you with the beer. And so what you are doing in that moment, it's not even just worship, it's not even, rather, it's not even just, um, testimony, oh, I remember, and like, like, I will not forget. So that God can do another thing for me, no, you are, you are literally, you're literally, um, how do I do this now? You are acknowledging God, I mean, away from the things that he's doing, you're just saying, I know that it was you. I, like, I know, so it's a my friend, but like, I didn't know him that he was you, so like, it ought to press that in mommy, blah, 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 you know, it's been a while, this journey is not today. So even this one, I know that you would do it, so it's not even a case of, oh, I'm saying it so that you can do it, no, I know that you would do it, because it is you that did A, B, C, and D. It's like speaking to your husband and, you know, building, building him up, I mean, you can build God up, say, but you can lift him up, you know, in your heart, in your understanding, in your mind. Can exalt him in the way that your mind sees the Lord, so like, within your, your partner, you know, with words, and just saying, like, yo, you passed that by exams. This one, you, you ate his bread, you eat it, you know, like, I, I be- I believe you, I trust you. Love you, like, you, you, for example, parenting, you know, look at how you were, you know, when we gave birth to, um. The master, who my children's name. Look at how you were when we gave birth to, yeah, Carol, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm seeing your name, so, yeah, just came to remind. But it was good to see you on the call tonight, look at how you were with, you know, Carol, when we just gave birth to her. I know you will be a great father, no, I know you are a great father, like, that just, even to us humans, like, it does something to us to say, oh. This person actually believes in me, that's why, that's purely that's what it says, forget all the other extras, like, okay, yeah, so because of that, I will have confidence. No, if I tells you, at least he believes in me, like, this person values me, this person honors me, and in that moment, it is worship, you know. Um, so even with God, the recounting of the testimonies that he has, of the things that he has done for us. Is an acknowledgement that we, ah, we know that he is our God, and we know that everything that we have, everything we've conquered, everything we've done is because of him. And so that just opens up his, his presence for us to say, yeah, that's my child, you know me, so come, what do you want? You know, like, literally, that's what it does, that's what it does, thank you, dummy, um, who wants to go next? Time for your checkup, time for your checkup, if you know that song, you should have it, you, by now. Who wants to go next, who wants to share what they have learned today, um, Abigail? If you're trying to speak, I don't know, you are muted. Um, I'm not sure that Amajish Nala can come off mute, but it would be great to hear from you too. What are you going on with today? I mean, if you'd rather type, um, once I see somebody typing, I'll know that, you know, you want to type each page through, wait. To see if you're typing, but you must, in Jesus' name, tell me what you have learned, it's very, you know, you know that this is an important part of Bible study. This ain't no sermon, you know, so, Abigail, where are you? Amajish Nala, where are you? Is pharmacy here, no, follow me, yes, what have you learned? Thank you. Believe me, I'm also, um. Thank you, so much, Nala says, worship is an exchange, whatever we're doing to God is as a response to what he has done, yes, yes, yes. An exchange, in fact, I, 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 I really just pray, I think it's my, my desire a lot that, you know. Um, we, we really know God, and I don't mean to say that vaguely, but like, we really know God, because there are moments in worship that. It is now beyond, oh, um, um, you know, like, God is great, God is mighty, like, it is beautiful, honestly. It is beautiful, and I really pray that we come into that experience, um, it goes beyond, you know, God is great, God is mighty, oh, you know. The rule with the scepter of righteousness, like, there is no shadow of turning, it now goes from that to, you love me so much, like. There, it, it becomes a, I'm no, I'm now no longer, I mean, in my, in my worship, in my reverence, in my. Uh, acknowledging who God is or what he is capable of, you know, what he has done, it now becomes a what he's saying over me. You know, there is that, there is an exchange, really, there's this song, um, I think it is, eh. Deeper, yes, by TY below, um, where she featured, um, pastor, no. No, no, it wasn't deeper, uh, what was this song again, you know, she, she featured apostle, you see, again, again, eh, um. Yes, the song that she featured, Sumisola, thank you, I can't remember the name, but that song, Sha, if you listen to her words, you know, it's an exchange of identity. Like, he takes, he, sometimes you leave worship, and you're like, oh my God, God has my back. He will say anything to you, but like, there's just an exchange of, 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 of knowledge, it's an exchange of, of, um, um. Of the state of our hearts, like, it becomes, I'm gonna offer you, I'm gonna give you an offering, you know. Especially when I worship him from pain, oh my God, like, I'm going to offer you something, I'm going to offer you my, my, like, me, literally. Because I don't know what I'm going to give anyway, even like, if I give you one thousand, or I do, or one million, do anything, you know, but you just say, I'm offering myself right now. I'm going to lose everything that I am, strip myself of this, because it is nothing compared to you anymore, and then you just begin to, you know, refer God. Um, there is now a thing that it gets to, where it's like, God is now singing over you, oh, such a beautiful thing. God is now singing over you, and then he begins to, you know, just embrace you, in, it may not necessarily tell you anything or instruct you to do anything. But there is just a warmth that you feel, that, and that's, and that's why, that's why we keep saying, you know, there's something that you're getting friends of, like, you're gonna get elsewhere. That coke, you know, um, drugs, alcohol, whatever, doesn't do to you, parties, you know, doesn't do to you. You can't get that elsewhere, honestly, as that feeling, you can't even experience it, first of all, but you can also get it elsewhere, nothing else is compared to that feeling, ecstasy, no. Like, you begin to feel a certain kind of embrace, I just, that, that, uh, uh, um, um, gives your heart peace. You know, that even though this mountain is still before me, either I walk into it and I become, you know, transparent. Or as I start to climb, it seems very easy to climb, I said, in fact, I'm not even seeing the mountain anymore, you know, like, I'm just seeing the Lord and his beauty and. And his heart towards me, and just knowing that, no matter what it is right now, no matter the overwhelm that I feel, I am loved by the Lord, like. It begins to just reaffirm your identity, it begins to just really, um, show you who you are. And it, it is such a beautiful thing, so thank you, Amajish Nala, um. Uh, believe me and Abigail, I know Carol joined in a bit late, so, I don't know if you still want to share anything, Carol. Um, that you have gotten within a few minutes that you've joined, but that would be great, but, um, believe me and Abigail, please, you have. I hope you have not slipped, please. Abigail, have you slipped? Um, I didn't see anybody typing, Kenny, are you still here with us?
I'm finding it difficult to hear, sorry.
Oh, um, I didn't hear that, um, just here, I'm finding it difficult to speak, I'm guessing you're on the road, but. Um, okay, um, maybe if you could take that again, because I, I think that we can still hear whatever you say, you know. In spite of, uh, um. I mean, except you cannot speak, but if, if you're worried about the noise, um, you can try to speak first, then let's see if you can hear. Okay, I took that as a, no, um. I mean, if you, if you would rather type it, then that's also fine, that's also fine, the idea is just for us to, um. Revise or, you know, edify ourselves, really, um, and the truth is, more, more often than not, what you. When you, when you do these revisions, the things that you have taken in, because the truth is, we spend two hours here every time we gather together. All right, so I was saying that, um, everything that we hear, 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 you know, will not, um, resonate with your hearts. The way that the one line or one thing, you know, would jump at you and that would just be it, um. But in the sharing what that thing is, it, it, it preserves it, so that's the idea of this, it preserves what that thing is for you. You may not know it actively, but when the, when the time comes and, you know, situation asks for the fruit of that word, you would have it to give. That's the truth, you have it to give, so that's, that's the significance of what we're doing, so, um, if you can type, you know, um, Abigail. And, um, believe me, if you can type, that would be great, um. If you can come off mute, that would be great, but if you cannot, if you cannot, please do type later when you can.